All right, I'm going to call to order the Committee of Holes for May 5. Clerk Boeck, could you please do the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Palivinoglu. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. We have six members present.
Okay, and so members know Councilman Jackson did inform us he will be late from work. He's on his way right now. So with that, we're going to the minutes. Councilman Garza.
With that, I would move the April 28 minutes as written.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. You have up to three minutes. If you would like to speak on an item, now is your opportunity. Come up to the podium. And if you could state your name for the record, please. Seeing no takers, we're going to move on to closed session. Councilman Garza.
All right. Pursuant to MCL 15.268(c) of the Open Meeting Act, City Council hereby recess into closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 214, as requested by the city. And with that, we will have Dennis Parker, Elizabeth O'Leary, and Kyla Moore in attendance. With that, I would move to go into closed session.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Clerk Boeck. Could you take the...
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Palivinoglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Six members, 6-0.
All right, we will adjourn. All right, we are back from closed session, and we are going to move on to five presentations. We're going to have department budget presentations, starting with Human Resources, who is making their way on down. And Elizabeth, when you get down there, if you can make sure the green light's on, and if your team wants to introduce themselves, and start whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening. We want to thank you for being here. We're the Department of Human Resources Administration. My name is Elizabeth O'Leary. I'm the department director, and I have my deputy director, Kyla Moore, who's here, who will address the questions that the council has.
Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight. I will address the questions. I'll start with question number one. Question number one was, what's the difference with the budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? That answer is, basically at this point, overall, the budget is status quo. And some of the modest adjustments between each line item based upon what was projected and the cost that was projected. So I'm not sure if Jake wanted to add in on that, what the differences were with that.
I'll pass unless I ask. Thank you.
Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? If so, why? No, there wasn't. Are there programs you have done in the past that have not been included in your budget? No. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. We had another question here. It was asked, what was the impact of 311? And have they had any impact on our staff? No, we have not had any calls or any... We have not used 311 at all. But right now, we're currently trying to partner with them. And due to confidentiality and our interactions with the city, we basically are looking at exploring potential collaborations with 311 in the future. So if there's any issues or anything that we can use as it relates to any constraints that we don't have as it relates to confidentiality, we will collaborate with them in moving forward. Next question was, are there any eliminated combining or contracting positions that we have in our budget? And if so, what are those specifics? We have no budgeted permanent positions have been eliminated or combined. And we have some contract workers that assist us with our workload in hiring and the labor relations and in the payroll benefits department. How many employees have left the department in the past year? We had one budgeted FTE that's left the department in the last year. And we've had some contractors that have been in that department leave, but we haven't had any of the contractors leave. How many are due to retirement? None. And then what were the operational changes you've made to become more efficient in your department? And what were the savings? So we are currently in the process of going to the electronic file system right now for our personnel files and our medical files currently. Savings have not been realized yet because we are not finished with that project. We are in the middle of the project. And we're going to be converting all of our TEA contracts over to paperless as well in the NeoGov platform. In the last year, our systems that were updated due to financial enterprise, then the platform changed over to BSNA, and so we're still working through that. Are you able to perform any of the necessary departmental responsibilities with the budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services in your department that will be providing... Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm doing this the first time, so bear with me. So the question, the next question was, are there any initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? So basically, we're soon onboarding a new training and dispute resolution administrator that was approved in our previous budget. And the focus on this position is to do more training for the city employees in various topics and areas. The creation of this performance management they're going to look into for us, as well as necessary services or departments that have the bandwidth to undertake... That had not had the bandwidth to undertake any of the... in the past. So basically, with this position, we're going to just be looking at how we can improve services, such as new employee orientation for managers, so that they can basically get into the... Just knowing that, what they need to take upon when they actually come into the department, such as onboarding, offboarding, what kind of things they need to know prior to, as they come on as a supervisor, what they need to undertake. So we would like to have this position be responsible for doing some of that and new supervisor training. I think that would be key, just so that that information will be very impactful for the staff and the new employees as well. So hopefully, this position will take upon some of that, too, so that it can help us move forward. Have you budgeted or received for federal grant fund? No. And basically, the question, the very second part of that question is, is will you still be able to continue your services or funds that would be used for the purchases of the items that you intend to purchase for grant funds? The answer is no. What impact has BSNA done to your department? And what issues have you run into? Have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? Although BSNA has been a transition for us, we have faced some challenges. But HR department, especially our payroll division, has been diligent in weathering the obstacles. And anything that we've been presented with, we've been able to overcome that. And then each of the departments in our payroll department, we realize that they have some complexities with the payroll and the benefits, but the systems are able to account for every single detail that was impossible at one point. Now we are actually, you know, getting through and over those processes and being able to get through and understand the system a little better. We remain committed to resolving any of these issues through our transition to the best of our abilities. So we are working through any of those kinks that we may have.
And I'll also add in onto the BSNA piece that we have an incredibly complex system when it comes to employees and union groups and lots of different benefits that we administer in HR. And so any overhaul of a full payroll system is going to be challenging. But I can assure you that payroll has been working diligently to overcome the obstacles and to weather this transition. I do want to give kudos to our payroll team because they went through a financial enterprise upgrade last spring/summer, and then turned around and did a BSNA upgrade in the fall of 2024. So that's huge, and I just have to acknowledge that as the director. And their ability to sustain the momentum and to be positive about it has been instrumental.
Okay, do we have any questions? Internal Auditor?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for HR? Just one quick one from me. You said that you didn't have any retirement, so I'm guessing that it was fixed benefits that increased on the retirement fixed benefits line 22% from last year to this year?
I will defer to Jake on the increase on that. I would assume that there was, we had wage increases for all of our unions and benefit increases in some, so...
Yep, I think I looked into that specifically. So when I was designing the budget last year, there was one position, the Training Disputes HR Resolution position. I had costed that out, and in putting it into the budget, both those lines being personnel rather than recalculate all the fringe benefits, I just put in that one line rather than split the fringe benefit cost between the two. So that's why I think the payroll fringes seems to reduce while the fixed fringes seems to increase. It's just the balance of those factors and the other across-departmental changes.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you both for being here, and we will move on to our next item.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
District Court is next. If you want to step on down and introduce yourself and team, and start with the questions whenever you are ready.
Good evening, council. Now, you can hear me. Good evening, council. It's always good to come and share what's happening in District Court. I'm Anethia Brewer, your court administrator, and joining me this evening is our Chief Judge Stacey Buchanan and our Deputy Administrator Susan Neeling. And we, too, had a set of questions to answer for you. So the first one being that there is very little difference with our budget from the current fiscal year from last year. It's basically status quo, and any increases or changes will definitely be personnel, which represents sometimes between 80 and 90% of our overall operational budget. We have not had any changes or services in our department that we're responsible for, so we continue to move forward with what we do as justice providers based on court ruling statute. For 311, the calendar year 2024, 311 has logged 883 calls for the District Court. We do not have a formal partnership with them. We are linked as a 54A general designation, which is very similar to how police and fire is treated. We have a lot of detailed information, a lot of confidential information, and so they make referrals of calls over directly to the court. We are able to perform all of our necessary department responsibilities with this budget. Now, for new initiatives and services, that's two answers to that question. First, we do have one new initiative that just began, and we're still in the planning stages, and that is for our firearms relinquishment grant. I know some of you have heard about that. That is still in the planning stages, so I look forward to coming back in the future and providing more information on that. But we have purposely stepped back from engaging in new initiatives. We have, about 80% of our staff is brand-new. So we are also doing a lot of training in-house along with the BSNA platform. Our case management system also took a new upgrade. And so our staff is having some challenges learning how to navigate and put in specific requests into the State Court Administrator's Office for things we're doing. So we're also navigating that. We are now becoming well-versed in using our MyFile platform. And we're looking forward to here sometime in June, providing the terminal that is required of us for proper people that come in, and we will be assisting and helping them to do some of their filing electronically. So soon, it will be across the board for our Civil Division. So those are the things that we've been working on. And then on top of that, Susan and I will probably be able to design and plan a building in the future. We are very, very involved with the planning for the new justice complex. And so that's some of the time that we're also spending on that. So BSNA. I'm sure that District Court has faced some of the same challenges that other divisions, departments, and the city has faced. The only thing that I guess I would like to say is, as a main user of the system, I would have liked to see more initial training on how to really navigate and learn how to produce reports and things of that nature. Now, with that said, District Court does have a private session scheduled tomorrow with a team from BSNA that's going to come in and help us decide or to take care of some of the challenges that we've been having with the system. So we are looking forward to that. If you have any questions about payroll later, Susan actually does all of the payroll and benefits for the District Court, so if any questions come up, maybe she can answer that. So that's our answer about BSNA. I saved the two questions for last that I'm going to merge together to discuss, and that is about receiving federal grant funds, number one, and then providing programs that we've had in the past that may go away. And if I seem a little, how do I want to say it, passionate about this, I am, so I would like to speak directly to our eviction diversion program. This year ends the grant from the National Center of State Courts. And as most of you know, we were chosen as one of the first cohort cities in this nation to develop a national program for eviction diversion. We've been very successful at doing that. First, we were very fortunate to obtain a young man whose dedication to the program is just outstanding. He's gone above and beyond to make sure that we've developed what we need to. So much so that National Center for State Court views our program as the national model. They have paid for Ulysses to present our program in Tulsa, Oklahoma, Tampa Bay, Florida, Los Angeles, California, and right here in Detroit. To date, he has worked directly with 1,961 families. Currently, over 1,300 households are receiving proactive email campaigns, and they've been provided with information regarding food, housing, job information, job fears, free training, tuition. I can go on and on. We continue to push this information out weekly to our citizens. Through his work, we've learned that the first 1,000 families he served is responsible for 4,000 current eviction cases in our court. Lansing's model of having a facilitator directly scheduled with tenants within the Financial Empowerment Center, which we work hand-in-hand with, has now been implemented in seven courts across America. This is something we did in less than three years. Very impressive. The court requested this position full-time for our upcoming budget. That has been denied. And so I am making a plea to council to reconsider this decision and to put this issue on a critical needs agenda, if one exists. In conclusion, I just want to say that I've been in court administration since the mid-'90s, so I know I'm dating myself, a long time. And I've watched how courts have evolved, transformed, become more social active, starting with working with veterans. From there, we went to specialty courts, where we, you know, address addiction, mental illness. And then, of course, the pandemic brought on some other things that came to the forefront: employment, housing. And so I would just like for you all to keep that in mind as we move forward when we're going through and finalizing this budget, because I do know the City of Lansing does benefit from what we do during our eviction diversion program. And I know Judge is sitting here. She's the one that sits and handles these cases on a weekly basis. But I'm telling you, it's working, and we are getting people help, and we're keeping families in their homes. And so with that, I'll end answering our questions and take questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing no takers, we appreciate all of you coming today.
Thank you.
And good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to move on to Downtown Lansing, Inc. If you could introduce yourself and your team, and start whenever you are ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathleen Edgerly. I serve as the Executive Director of Downtown Lansing, Inc., and am joined this evening by Julie Durham, our Board Treasurer. We'll be answering the 11 questions that were sent to us in preparation for presenting DLI's budget for the next fiscal year. With question number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? The financial differences largely include state allocated funding as well as increases in insurance and maintenance contract costs, resulting in our income and expenses both increasing by $825,000. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? It's a bit of a complex question, so I just wanted to elaborate on it a bit. We are collaborating with the CSO Street Reconstruction that is planned for the 200 and 300 blocks of South Washington Square in downtown in 2026, and are advocating for accessible and cohesive sidewalk designs to be made in conjunction with that CSO Street Reconstruction. And that's based on business owner feedback as well as funding that we receive through the Leo Talent Investment Pilot Program. In addition, for our monthly merchant learning series that are held each month in collaboration with the Small Business Development Center, local credit unions, industry experts in the area of marketing, inventory, purchasing, et cetera, we are now offering both virtual and in-person models, as well as recording those so they're more accessible for those who cannot attend those meetings at the designated time. And we are currently now offering monthly office hours and merchant meetups for merchants to come to us at a time that's convenient for them to ask any questions, brainstorm ideas together, share things for events, programs, projects of that nature. Question number three, are there any programs you have done in the past that you have not included in this budget? No. What impact has 311 taken on your department and staff? We recognize 311 as a tool for people to access needed and important information. And at this time, no one has specified that they were referred to DLI through the 311 system. In regards to any eliminated, combined, or contracting of positions in our budget, there are none. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? This past year, we instituted a new project management system for managing our Main Street volunteer-led projects, internal tasks, reporting, and it has definitely resulted in time savings and efficiencies that allow us to track the progress on all of those projects and the volunteer hours. In regards to the question about are we able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? While assessment revenue only covers a portion of our maintenance contract and staff salaries, the rest of the budget presented we fund through sponsorships, grants, ticket sales, state funding support, et cetera. So yes, through the budget that is proposed, we are able to perform the necessary tasks. Question number eight, are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing within this budget? None that we didn't already outline in question number one. In regards to the top two largest vendors for our department and when they were last bid, Lake State Landscaping and Snow Removal serves as our maintenance contractor for the downtown district. That contract was last bid in 2024. And then Smith Group was bid in 2023 in an extension of our comprehensive market analysis that we led, and they are providing design assistance for the sidewalk enhancements with the CSO project. Question number 10 about budgeting for receipt of federal grant funds? No, we have expended all federal grant funds received in the past. And with the new BSNA system and the effect that that has had on our department, the new BSNA system, like all software changes, has definitely brought some challenges and learning opportunities for our staff. But we've received a lot of support, both in in-person trainings, printed-out manuals sent to our staff, and we were able to work through any nuances that we had through that system and have grown accustomed to it and find it fairly efficient. Any questions?
Okay, I'm going to open up the Florida questions if anyone has any questions. No takers. All right.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate both of you coming, and it looks like we are going to move on.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we are going to have Finance. Crystal, I believe, is here. Feel free to start on the questions when you're settled in.
Okay, how about now?
We can hear you now.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm wearing a dual hat tonight. My name is Crystal Thomas. I am the Finance Director and the Acting City Treasurer. I have combined my responses to help with the time. So the first question is, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? For Finance, the only difference is the increase in personnel numbers due to reclassifications in the department. For Treasury, we're adding an administrative specialist to help with streamlining workflow and operational efficiency on the income tax side of the House. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? That answer is going to be no for both areas. Are there any programs you have done in the past that have not been included in this budget? The answer is no. Any rate fees or increases? None. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in the budget? The answer is no. Question number six, what impact has 311 taken on your department and staff if 311 answers calls? So for Finance, 311 does not provide that service. But for Treasury and Income Tax, they are awesome. We do not have the capacity to take the number of calls that they are able to field for us. For the property side, they're able to even go a little bit deeper in their responses because that information is public. However, for Income Tax, once it gets into the taxpayer information and different things like that, questions that they may not be trained to answer, then those calls would come directly to our Treasury and Income Tax staff. Number seven, are there any eliminated, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. And if so, provide specifics. For finance, the answer is yes. The former controller who has retired will be on as a limited role as a contractor with limited hours to help us. This is a very busy season for finance. We have our year in close for 6:30 as well as preparing for the audit, and so we want that to be a smooth transition as we onboard our new controller. In addition, we have contractual people that also include the senior buyer and two administrative assistants. On the treasury and income tax department, we have a relationship with personnel world that's very seasonal. It depends on whether we're in a high property tax season with our summer or winter, or if we are in the income tax season where we can sometimes get up to 15 tubs of mail. So we really need help opening that mail and making sure that those payments are applied. How many employees have left your department in the past year? How many were due to retirement? For finance, three employees have left the department. One was due to retirement. For treasury, three employees left to take positions within city of Lansing, and there are no retirements for treasury and income tax. Nine, how many employees still work hybrid and why? Are the hours of treasury still 8:30 to 4:00? So the hours for treasury are actually 8 to 4:00. And so treasury hours, we provide that out, those, that time because our CSR's are still handling cash and they need that additional hour so that they can close out, they can count their funds, there's reports that have to be run, and then cash has to be secured. So it takes about an hour to pull that off. So that's why we close at 4:00 and then by 5:00, they're out the door. We are having conversations now about how that's going to look once we move to the city hall so that we can make sure that even if we're not able to take a payment, you know, maybe there's a kiosk or an online opportunity for them, as well as if they have questions that we will have staff available during that four to five hour period. For finance, we have about six people who are on a hybrid schedule. And then for... Is that AI? Okay. And so, so the question about the hybrid is the kind of work that is being done in finance, it can require you to need to just hone in and focus. And with a lot of interruptions, sometimes that can be difficult to do. So we have allowed the hybrid to go on as long as it's not interrupting operational efficiency. Same thing for the income tax side of treasury. We do have a couple days of remote work. Number 10, what if any operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? What were the savings? For finance in fiscal year '25, they hired two additional accountants to increase capacity and efficiency. So that's just more of a return on your investment so that things are not falling behind and that we're more timely performing those tasks. For treasury, we currently reorganized to account for a new position to better serve our customers specifically in the property tax area. We saw that there were some bottlenecks there and we knew that we needed more capacity to serve our customers. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget, both finance and treasury? The answer is yes. And number 12, okay, why are the credit card statements not balanced to the general ledger on a monthly basis? Why are they always three to five months behind? How was an accurate budget created without current charges balanced against the budget? So I will respond to this and then if Jake wants to add anything, he can. This is specifically, this question is specific for the finance department. Staff was out for an extended period of time. It was causing this task to fall behind. Since this time, the task has been reassigned. Now there is no backlog. Reconciliations are done monthly, and there is a procedure in place to keep the critical tasks on track. And that's the importance of having primaries and backups so that we don't lose any operational efficiency when someone has an emergency that comes up. And Jake, did you want to add anything on the budget side?
Yes, I suppose as it relates to budgeting, the primary basis for taking, evaluating department budget requests is looking at what the department asked for. From there, it's comparing to previous years, what has been budgeted, what have been actual expenditures, and what are year-to-date expenditures. And so evaluating current year expenditures, we can go into the transaction detail, compare that to transaction detail from previous years to identify if anything has been there in the past that doesn't appear to be there now. That's a investigative process of seeing whether or not there's been a change in business operations or whether it's simply a delay due to processes transitioning from people to people. And so that's all evaluated on a case-by-case basis with ultimately before a budget is submitted, we send out a draft set of line items to give departments the final chance to let us know if there's anything significantly changed.
I'm going to stop you real quick. So I think the question was, how did we make a budget if the credit cards weren't correct? I don't think I heard an answer anywhere in there.
So the, we're talking about reconciling, but the request for payment is still there. So we're still being made aware of what the expenditure is. It's just reconciling that to the actual support that accompanies the procurement card.
Were there any issues that came about from being, how far behind did we get? Five months?
So I, so the question said three to five months. And what I didn't lead with is I've been in this new role for about five weeks. So if there's something I can do to research and get you that information, I will be glad to do that.
I would love that. I appreciate that very much.
All right. So for question number 13, what happened this year with the W-2s that they had to be corrected? This is again focused on the finance department, and it was related to the new implementation with BSNA. The retirement and expense deduction codes were set up incorrectly by the vendor. And so therefore, finance had to then correct the W-2s for employees and also for the IRS. We did consult with our CPA firm, Maynard, and we were told that that correction would not impact a person's ability to file their tax returns. Number 14, are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? Both for finance and treasury? The answer is no. Number 15, who are the top largest vendors for your department and when were they last bid? Maynard was last bid. They're the CPA firm that does the external financial audit. They were last bid in 2019. And then MGT does our cost allocation plan. And I believe that the last, I'm not sure when the last time they were bid out. I do apologize for that. Do you have that information by any chance?
Repeat that one?
MGT Impact Solutions?
Oh, yeah, I think they, they're a competitor to Maximus, and so I think they did, when we took a look a few years back to see if there was anyone other than Maximus, they came up as an alternate vendor, and so they were used for a cost allocation plan for, I think, 2021 and 2022 years.
Okay. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
So for treasury, we have a couple. These are the same ones that we talked about last year as well. Kent Communication, they do all of our mailing and forms, and they're kind of exempt from that whole bid process. The last time that we did bids with Kent and Extend Your Reach was, original bid was back in 2018. So those are the two for treasury. Have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? So both for finance and treasury? The answer is they're not, they don't impact us. For number 17, what impact has the new BSNA had on your department? What issues have you run into? And have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? I think HR Director O'Leary explained that piece of it. I do want to say that with any implementation, there's always seems to be an issue. There's a difference between what's promised and what actually rolls out for go-live. But I think that we could have had more training. I think that that could have made some difference, but with any new implementation, some of the upgrades or whatever seems to almost break something else. And I've been around a lot of implementation, so I wouldn't, I don't see BSNA as anything different than that. We, on the treasury side of the house, we had a couple manual workarounds that BSNA had to have us do until we were able to get in line for the fix, if you will. But then once the fix came through, we didn't have any problems after that. So overall, I still believe that BSNA is a robust system that is helping us to improve our operational efficiency and helping us move to automation of many of the manual tasks that we had. I think that was the last question on the list, so if you have questions?
Do we have questions up here?
Hi, I was just wondering, as far as these questions, the working hybrid, does that have any impact on the budget numbers you ever presented?
No, it doesn't have any impact on the budget. I mean, we're more efficient, so less hours that are required, less overtime that's required because we're able to get it done. But there's no impact on the budget there. It's been proven, you know, I'm from the state, so it's been proving that, you know, our metrics really actually increase. There's, there's this concept, I don't know, it happens to me sometimes when I was working for the state, you kind of feel guilty that you're working from home, so it seems like you're putting in more hours. But like I said, with, with our staff, some of the work is so heady that you really have to focus in. You don't want to make that mistake, and you need to just zone in on whatever it is, a spreadsheet or whatever calculations. Sometimes you just get people running in and out of those offices, and it can really distract you. So it has not increased our budget. If anything, it has reduced our overtime.
Thank you.
Perfect. Is there any other questions? Okay. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight. Just, just real quick, and you may have mentioned this, but the question about the credit card statements being three to five months behind, I thought you said because staff was gone for a considerable amount of time. Can you explain why they were gone? Is it the hybrid positions you're talking about or?
No, it's, it's not, it's a, it's personal, so I, I...
Okay.
Yeah. So we had someone that had some personal issues and they were dealing with those. And at the time, that person was the only one that was doing that particular task. So that is why we fell behind until we could find someone to replace.
Okay, all right. I thought it may have been multiple staff that was gone, so it was just the one.
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions? I'd be curious, in finance and treasury, how many, do you know what percentage of staff is currently working hybrid?
I would, I think for finance, I can give you a ballpark, because I'm trying to do, yeah, yeah. For finance, it's probably about 60%. For treasury, zero. For income tax, about 50%. But I can give you actual, I can give you actual information. I just, you know, I don't want to do the math in my head.
And do management level and, and, you know, folks that are at your level, do they come in? Do they work hybrid?
Typically, they're in the office.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have. Does anyone have anything else? Thank you for coming tonight. Very brave of you after five weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 6D, a resolution, ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 214 to cover January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029. Some of the quick highlights that we got in this contract were increases over four years of 3% and 2%, I believe, back to back. You also have some changes in insurance to try to comply with a possible change in state law, to move away from the hard cap board, and then there's miscellaneous changes throughout the contract and some wording, including domestic partner and bereavement. And I believe that there is a little bit of a change in the, some wording on the sick leave as well. So if there is no further questions, Councilman Garza.
Okay, I'd make a motion to move the resolution, ratification of the collective bargaining agreement, CBA, between City of Lansing and Teamsters Local 214.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, we're going to move on to item E, a resolution for reappointments to various boards. I am going to read some of these off here. So we have the Arts and Culture Commission, Morgan Butts at large, and Stephanie Pelagi at large, terms to expire June 30th, 2029. I'm sure I fumbled that last name. Board of Fire Commissioners, Barbara Lawrence, First Ward, and Stefan Purchase at large, terms to expire June 30th, 2029. The Board of Public Service, Nancy Malo, First Ward, term to expire June 30th, 2029. Board of Review, Eric Shirtsing, I can't say that last name, at large, term to expire June 30th, 2028. We have the Board of Water and Light, Simone James, First Ward, term to expire June 30th, 2029. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals, Christopher Linauzi at large, Marcy Elling at large, and Mitch Rice at large, terms to expire June 30th, 2028. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board, Terrence Frazier, First Ward, term to expire June 30th, 2029. Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board, Jennifer Hines, Bus Business Representative, and Jennifer Estel, Business Representative, term to expire June 30th, 2029. The Elected Officers Compensation Commission, Jim McElvy at large, term to expire October 1st, 2032. HRCS, Glenn Lopez, First Ward, term to expire June 30th, 2029. Lansing Public Media Authority, Michael Malik Brown, member, term to expire June 28th, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2028. And Jenna McShane, member, term to expire June 30th, 2027. Local Development Finance Authority Board, David Washburn, member, term to expire June 30th, 2029. Planning Commission, Ted Odell at large, term to expire June 30th, 2029. Police and Fire Retirement Services of Trustees, Terry Taylor, citizen, term to expire June 30th... 30th, 2030. Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, Board of Directors, Laura Slotken, Resident, term to expire June 30th, 2029. And South MLK Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority, Board of Directors, Amanda DeFries, Business Representative, term to expire June 31st, 2029. And I apologize to every name I have butchered. Um, and with no further questions, Councilman Garza. I'm sorry, we do have a question. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. It's not so much a question, it's just that, um, if it's voting, I'm voting no, and that's because the Board of Water and Lights included. And, um, Ms. Simone James, a wonderful person. As you all know, that, um, I require a little more scrutiny, and I hope that you all will this time. We've seen over this period that the Board of Water and Light has not been a utility for the people. They do say and do a lot of good things. We've heard how they banded the rules as far as our, um, what the definition of clean energy is. All of a sudden, they're like, oh, gases, gases, I can't tell you, I can't tell you. And then all of a sudden, oh, now it's dirty, but it's clean, it's whatever. They built multiple gas power plants since they said they would no longer do it, including the Clean Bond Energy Proposal of the rice plants that we talked about so much. So there's all the reasons, but at the same time, I'm hoping that we can step up a little bit and at least require a little bit more. And, um, over this time, I've also noticed that all of the board members, for the most part, do not, um, really, do not challenge or engage. They seem to just take whatever they get from the general manager, who has his own interests and agenda, and, um, also, I just don't think that's right. So the only people that supposedly can keep the Board of Water and Light accountable is the Board of Commissioners, and I would expect that from all of them, and I hope that we're the only people that can vote them up or down, so it's really up to us. So, thank you. I'll be voting no for that reason.
Thank you. So, Councilman Garza.
All right. With that, I would move the resolution for multiple reappointments to various boards and commissions.
Okay, proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Passes six to one. All right, next, we are on to item F, which is a resolution encouraging the Michigan Congressional delegation to support preserving the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. Um, Jake, are you able to speak on this for us?
Uh, yes. Uh, so overall, um, uh, if, uh, the taxability of our municipal bonds were to change, that we would have to pay additional taxes, uh, this would be additional cost to the city. It would mean that we would need to, um, borrow more to cover, uh, the cost of, uh, various projects. It would, uh, um, require us to reduce scope of particular pro- projects, or, uh, provide additional burden on either taxpayer funds or the city's funds. Uh, or, we could potentially give you an approximate, uh, amount of how much that would be over a certain amount of money, but, uh, uh, I would say this is something that would be significantly impact, uh, particularly capital expenditures of the city and our ability to fund, uh, major, uh, innovative projects, uh, particularly considering, uh, the size and scope of our, um, public safety facilities, uh, that, uh, for that $175 million project, that would be vastly, uh, a greater cost on our taxpayers if, uh, it was the case that that was taxable.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Um, I guess for who, whoever wrote it, it's very general, 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 and then the specific things to Lansing is the public safety complex, ovation, and the infrastructure portion of Red Cedar, I guess. But above that, in the general section, it talks about all of the roads and sewers and other things. So why highlight these, especially some that other council people, or some council people didn't even, or people in general, didn't want to support in the first place? But I'm sure everybody wants to support roads and other things, which sounds like it's eligible, so why not name those projects?
Oh, I, uh, I didn't quite write this, uh, myself, however, I can say that these are all, uh, highly important projects, and I, uh, thank you in particular for bringing up the, um, Combined Sewer Overflow Separation Project. And so, uh, this is a major cost, uh, over, uh, several decades on, uh, separating our stormwater and sanitary sewer systems, and, uh, that is a cost that is directly borne on, uh, the people who benefit from that services, which is, uh, pretty much, uh, everyone in Lansing. Uh, and so, uh, if that was to be taxable and an increased cost to there, that would mean, uh, Lansing residents, uh, water bills going up, uh, directly. And so there's, uh, similarly, uh, when we consider, uh, items such as our parking bonds, uh, if those costs were to increase, we would have to increase, uh, the cost of, uh, parking services proportionately and other, uh, enterprise activities that, uh, engage in capital projects. And so, uh, this is a matter that is, uh, uh, very critical for local governments everywhere, and whether or not, um, you agree with a particular project, uh, it is the, um, city and the taxpayers who will ultimately pay the price if it's, uh, uh, what was formerly not taxed is now, uh, taxed. It would be, uh, direct cost, uh, basically, uh, from the federal government, uh, putting, uh, cost pressures on local governments.
And then I have, uh...
Nope.
No further questions, uh, Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. With that, I'd move the resolution encouraging the Michigan Congressional delegation to support preserving the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, we are on to, uh, item G, resolution for the CDBG Budget Action Plan adoption. Um, just as a quick reminder, there have been no changes, um, or updates with this since we got it, um, and had the public hearing on it. Um, it was initially presented to us. I think that they did two presentations out in the community as well. Um, this would be, uh, about 3.5 million, including what we have left over from last year, um, in monies. Um, and right now, our plan is, uh, to continue to move forward unless we hear differently from the federal government. So if there's no further questions on this, I would... Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. With that, I'd move the resolution, uh, adoption of the CDB, the CBD, CDBG Budget Action Plan.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Seeing no further business before the body, we are adjourned at 6:07.